Mrs. Melton?
Mr. Ors.
Here.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Fox.
Here.
Ms. Lee.
President.
Ms. Nichols.
Here.
Mr. Rockwell.
Here.
Mr. Bellman.
Here.
We do have a form of the council president.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have any room, I don't know.
I don't know, I'll move it here.
Okay.
Well, can you, I've got my agenda.
Okay.
Michael, you don't have any extra books, do you?
Uh, we can get some.
We don't, I, I'll get some.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, we didn't bring any. Did everybody back there get some money?
Oh, I know, I'm gonna film.
Oh. Okay.
I know the way we did the meeting last week worked out pretty well, you know, letting the groups come with us if they could fit when we, once we get started, but before we did any of that, Michael, did you have any just brief overviews, any preambles to go over before we go into town clerk?
On these budgets? Uh, just, uh, no, not really, but I did want to mention, there's a couple of things. We're on tomorrow night, 6:30 in the chambers, executive session, joint meeting at the board of ed, 7:30.
Chairs?
Yeah, yeah, you don't have to, it's executive session.
I know 6:30, I need to be here at 7:00.
Yeah, it's executive session, and then we're gonna come back here at 7:30 for the budget presentation. There's nothing Wednesday or Thursday. And then next week we have a meeting, and then you have your public information session. The only other thing I wanted to mention, because this is the first time I've seen everybody here, except for Tom, is, um, I just want to make sure, we've been trying to keep track of who's coming and who's going, so just for the sake of keeping track, you should have, with tonight's handout, five of these, okay? There's the first one, which was the first night I presented, and it's white, okay? Then the second night, when we did call of administration and finance, which is the pink one, or as Peter likes to call it, he says colorblind salmon. And then the third handout was when we did public safety, and that's the green one. Everybody got a green one?
Yep.
Rob, you got them all up?
Yep, got them all.
No, it's, uh, Rob, you have white, pink, green?
I got a pack.
Oh, okay, okay.
I know I'm missing the meeting's last, is that yellow?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I couldn't make it.
Yep.
Uh, Tim, it's in the pack, in the envelope.
Oh, it's in the envelope?
Okay.
Yeah, and anybody who missed a meeting, there's an envelope with the package that we distributed.
Is this the one considered white, the one dated March 14th?
Yeah, yeah, and put a number one on that too, just so.
You guys can hear most of the week.
And then, um, tonight, at George's request, um, orange is the color of evening because it's public work. Um, the only thing I would say is, much of what we're going to discuss, you know, down the road, when you have to make your decisions on where you want this budget to end up, it's gonna be indecent bits of information, so this is gonna be invaluable, that's why we color coded them and I asked her to keep it all together. Paul, um, you were asked for the classification plan, it should be in the document that we handed out, uh, Thursday night, the yellow one, yeah.
The yellow.
And there's two other bits of information that we didn't discuss relative to human services that we will bring up. One had to do with population of people in apartments, senior centers and so on, senior living conditions and so on, we had it, and also to grant amounts. I told Michelle we've had such a short group of people here to wait for me to present it again, so I didn't want you to think about that. And then tomorrow night, Vinnie's gonna bring the EBOO1 and talk about that. That's the document, you raised the question about the indirect cost, and what are, what is the Board of Education recovering in the way of support from us in terms of adding to their base or their grant, um, uh, their grant eligibility? So, I think with that, we'll have covered everything, but we'll check this to make sure in terms of handouts. Now, as far as tonight, um, I have the town clerk, the assistant town clerk, and there's no need for me to do a preamble. I was going to, when George and Walter come up, if that's okay, but otherwise, um...
Why don't our clerk and our deputy come on, come on up?
Yeah.
Come on, Ben. Welcome.
Thank you. So, well, I've been away for a week, so, um, I wanted to have Patty join us by deputy, so, just in case she can bring us up to speed if I, you know, use it everything. Uh, she can answer any questions.
This is the decision package I'm going to, I'm going to issue to amend on the dissent on the previous, uh, uh...
Thank you. So, um, as far as our budget goes, um, I feel like we accomplished our goal of trimming on the town clerk's budget of any non-essentials, we made reductions in a lot of areas, so, if there's any concerns regarding any of the line items in the budget, I'd, you know, be happy to answer your questions on anything, um, for the accounts.
I just have one question, it came to mind because we've met with the voter, the registrars, we had a meeting, the corporate registrars, this is our conversation.
Right.
And, um, how do you guys interface in a way that, you know, saves you money, costs you money, how does that work? Does it work well?
Yeah, it works, it works really well, like, um, right now we're getting petitions for people to be on the ballot in November, and, um, there's a lot of names on there, on the petitions, and they all have to be checked, so, I don't have the power of the staff to do it, so I brought the list over there, and there's a part where they can check off, and, um, they can check all those voters to make sure that they're bona fide voters, and then they bring it back to me, and I certify it, and then I send it to the state, so I can have them do that for me.
Now, their workload hasn't necessarily changed yet, but isn't there some differences with stuff that gets done through the state now, like the verification? I know as candidates, we were, we were doing stuff online, has any of that impacted their office to make their life easier?
No, they were not involved in any of the financial filings.
So, none of that is something that's impacted them, hurt them, helped them, or anything?
No, um, much of their work is online now, they have to data input all the numbers for all the election results and everything, but it's just done a little bit.
But that's just reporting in and around election time?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. So, the interface with you guys is good, it's streamlined, it's...
Very, yeah, it's really, it works very well.
Okay. That, I didn't mean for that to be a linkie aside, just, uh, just came up because of indecent communications. Thanks.
Mm-hmm. So, um, yeah, all the line items, we are either at zero percent increase or very little increase, or we've lowered a lot of the specific accounts as far as our expenses go. Training, um, seminars, school, program materials, the same, office supplies, everything really is the same, separate, a couple of things have increased, but not by much.
Page nine has the summary, and you can see that the budget's going down by a little ten thousand dollars, three point two three percent. This budget currently has vacancy and a request for position to be unfrozen for a possible promotion, um, so, um, this may, I just want to, I guess the two overriding issues that Laura's there in.
Now, Laura, I think because that issue became an issue for us, we didn't feel we could make a decision at the council the other night, I know we went through our budget meeting, you know, three of us talked with you about your, that position, as did other positions get discussed that night. I think what we probably want to hear is a more, you know, with all of us in the room, you know, make your case, we've read the case, we're familiar with what you have, I think we're probably, or at least I'm thinking, you know, gee, if you had that 30 hours fully funded, no longer what it was, and you didn't have the 20, what would the impacts really be?
Okay, um, well, if we're finished talking about the line items, I'll go on to the staff.
Well, I didn't need to cut you off, but I think that's the heart of the issue.
No, no, I just want to make sure if there are any other questions about that, then we can go on to the real reason why I, you know, I'd like to have these changes. And, so I did write something up, and I'll just read it to you really quickly, that the town clerk's office is doing a really great job training the staff for other positions at town hall. Currently, five full-time employees in the town hall began their employment as part-time assistants in the town clerk's office. These two positions have become stepping stones to full-time jobs. We just get people trained and with a three-year certification course, and then they leave for full-time work. We can't keep pouring money into employees only to have them move onto other departments that can offer more hours. Much of what we do in our office is sensitive, birth, death, marriages, adoptions, military records, to name a few. When trained staff members leave for full-time work on a continual basis, unseasoned staff is the result. It is difficult to meet deadlines when senior staff has to step in to perform day-to-day duties at the town clerk, because we don't have enough coverage or we are training new staff. An office that often acts as the face of town hall should have dependable and knowledgeable staff. Therefore, I am requesting you not only unfreeze the 30-hour position, but increase it to 35 hours. This would be a tremendous help for consistent staffing and customer service. And as for the 20-hour position, the office has been operating in a 20-hour loss since the beginning of November. At times, there is only one staff member to manage the duties of the office. This is inefficient for a busy office and is not safe for staff, as we are often required to assist customers in the vault, leaving the outer office vacant. The 20-hour position is crucial for coverage during busy lunchtime. The level of activity in this, in this office cannot justify any further reductions, but if council decides it is necessary to reduce the hours in the town clerk's office, I would very reluctantly suggest making this position, the 20-hour position, a 10-hour position minimum. That's my recommendation.
Now, to go back, if I may, the 20-hour position you said is, kind of becomes a stepping stone?
Yeah, well, no, both the 20 and the third.
Okay, but let's start with the 20. That 20-hour position becomes a stepping stone to what, another department in the town?
Yeah.
Just another position they take somewhere else?
Yes, five people currently have positions in the town hall that were part-time assistants in my office.
Over span of...
Twenty years, actually, seven people have left for more hours, but five are still here.
Okay. Go ahead, you.
No, I've got to finish.
Well, I guess, I guess the next, it begs the question about 30 to 35, you started with 30 and you want 35.
Yeah, that's why people leave, because they want 35.
Okay.
That's why everyone has fun, they need more hours.
So, that doesn't have an impact on benefits, correct? That's, that's just hours.
For the 30-hour position.
And you're having that 30-hour person leave early or come in later? I mean, somehow they work it five days.
Yeah, the staff, right, they come in at night 30.
Okay.
Because usually two people, the town clerk and Patty, and I can handle it in the morning, someone can come in an hour later. So, yeah, we're training people, and then they'll go to town clerk's school, takes about three years to get certified, and then right around that time they leave. Now, Ann, who's going to get the full-time job in the public works department, and this just came up, now she's the fifth person that I was talking about. She worked in our office for two years, she was the 20-hour position, and she was just at the point where she knew the job. You work in the 30-hour position or the 35-hour position, after about two years, you finally really get a grip on what's going on in the office. So, it took Ann about two years, and she was working 20 hours, and she was just feeling comfortable being left alone, and, but she really needed to have a full-time job. And, I, you know, I can't blame her for that, but I'd want to see her improve.
Peter and Ben, right?
Laura, can we, um, relate things to page 11 of the, do you have the, um, the book written?
This?
No, of the, of the, of this.
Yeah.
Just because I'm trying to get a sense of...
Line item or...
The line item, yes. Because this, this is the, this is the look of the department, I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense of, of where these people are and who you have and who you don't.
Okay.
So, obviously, the 5101, which is the top position, is, is you, and that's fine, and Patty, I assume, is the deputy, so you've got, you've got the three assistants now, so, is there one that's currently vacant, is that what it is?
Well, the 30-hour one is...
Is, is that the one that's under 5102?
No, that's the one that's under 5103.
5103, that's the part-time, that's a part-time.
So, that's...
That's the 30-hour.
That's the 30-hour.
That's the 30-hour.
So, the 37266 is a 30-hour?
Yes.
And then the, the 20,000, 966, that's a 20-hour?
That's a 20-hour, yeah.
Okay. And are those currently filled, or...
Well, for the next few weeks, they're gonna, come June 18th, they'll both be empty. The 20-hour is, is, well, actually, Ann, who's in the 20-hour position now, has taken on the 30-hour responsibilities, she's working 30 hours now.
Okay.
So, the 30-hour position is the one that was frozen and is vacant, but Ann has filled in, making the 20-hour position open.
Okay. And the one that's the, the, um, under line item 5102, that is currently filled, the 51, 524?
Yes, yes, she's been there for many years.
Okay. Go ahead, Rob, and I can circle back.
Thank you, thank you, Laura. Um, just a couple of quick things, the, the 20-hour position, which is now, she's taking 30 hours, and I'm not trying to get in the middle of a change to public works, but if we went to 35, would that then be comparable to the position she's taking in public works?
I believe the public works position is still a way to grade up.
Okay. I was just wondering, if you went to 35, it was comparable, my reason being is if we went to 35, would that then advise her to possibly stay, since she has a level of experience you're looking for, if it's an upgrade in category, so maybe more dollars.
Had she found out that I, like, I was going to do this, like, when I told her, "I'm gonna go try to get 35 hours," she'd say, "You are," like, she, I think she would've stayed, but she already applied and got it, and then when I found out she got it, I was like, "This is ridiculous, revolving door, I can't take it anymore."
She's, she would be a TH5 at public works, she would be a TH3 in the town clerk's office, that's two grades higher.
And there is, no, Tim said there was no additional benefits, there's no additional cost in terms of benefits to go from 30 to 35?
No.
It's just wages?
It's just wages, yes.
And you've been without that position, well, you've been technically without the 20-hour position, because she's been filling the 30-hour since November of 17, correct?
Right, right before the elections.
So, it's about five months you've been without the 20-hour position.
Yeah.
And you're finding yourself way behind as a result of not having those 20 hours?
Yeah, it's like we're in crisis mode, we can only take care of just the surface stuff, you know, we can't do any planning, or any, um, any of the work that is waiting to get done, any of the plans that we have have to be put on hold, we're only taking care of what the business at hand is.
So, it sounds to me, though, that you just want to get back to full staff, but the reason you're asking for the extra five is to have some kind of retention?
Sure.
Because that extra five hours is gonna help you retain, you think?
Yeah, it will. And, but, the, the 20-hour position, um, what I did when I first came, as became town clerk, I rearranged the duties so that the 20-hour position is doing responsibilities that are easier to learn, so that, that changes wouldn't impact the office as much, because those duties are a little easier to learn than the other duties are more involved. You know, vital records, election, um, you know, licensing, reports, financial reports to the state, it takes a lot of time to learn all the different things that you have to do.
And I'm not looking to split hairs on five hours, I guess, but I just want to kind of give you my thought process on, on this budget just entirely, not just your department. Obviously, we're in tough financial times, and so I think we're all trying to find ways to have everyone do a little more and a little less. I know that's not easy. Clearly, it looks like you're trying to do that, because your budget is a little less dollars than it even was last year.
Right.
So, I appreciate that, because it looks like you guys are trying to do your best to tighten your belt, as Michael's been asking everybody to do, based on what the council's asking. But I guess, it sounds like you didn't want to go to the 10-hour, but if we did the 35 and gave you 10 or 15 hours, I, I know it sounds like we're splitting hairs, but to me, we're getting, getting you back to full, but we're not adding any more hours. I mean, would that be something that you would be able to, you feel like you'd be able to run your department appropriately with?
I think so, yeah, yeah.
Couldn't, could you restate that? So, were you saying like 15 to 35?
All, yeah, all's I was saying is that technically, in order to get them back to where they are at full, full complement of people, they had a 30-hour and a 20-hour, that's 50 hours. If we go to 35 to help her with the retention rate, technically, we could reduce to 20 to 15. Now, I know that sounds like splitting hairs, but I'm just trying to find, is to kind of keep those positions intact the way they are, since we are trying to tighten our belt a little bit. It's not an enormous amount of money, you're already saving money in your budget, but, you know, every little bit helps.
Right, that's why we went over the budget with fine-toothed comb, with surgery, we really pared it down as much as we could in order to try to save money, so that we could keep the position, you know, as many hours as we can, but we're willing to...
I have one last one, Patty, if you have some mind, right now we jump, and then I'll be done.
I just wanted to make sure the chairs are on my hands.
Yeah, just one more, I noticed you had talked about purchasing your own copier, this might be kind of micromanaging, but it sounds like you said you could pay for it within a year.
Yeah.
Is that something you're going to do?
Well, I would like to do it, but without the staff, um, to take care of the ledger as far as, you know, accounts, people are gonna be making their own copies on that machine, we have to keep track of how many copies they made. The way it is now, it's totally self-service, someone puts in their little card, they make the copies and they go, we don't have to deal with it all.
And you couldn't do that if we owned it, if we, because right now we get, what, 65, we give 65% away?
No, no, we give 65%.
To the company. So, you can't have a similar credit card system where the town gets 100%?
Um, I haven't really looked into that kind of a sys, I, I don't know what is available.
Because we have credit cards elsewhere in the tax department, right?
Doesn't the town lease copiers?
Yeah.
And that's what this, the one we have currently is a leased copier, so that's why they get the other portion.
We just entered a lease contract, didn't we?
Oh, that's different from the one we...
It's a different lease.
Yeah, especially, it's a different company, Continental Copier.
I see.
They go around to town clerk's offices.
This, this is the only coin-operated copier, I think, right, Tim, that we have, that we have, while our others are just there to service the staff and not coin-operated machines.
Well, but, but the reality is, the people are still paying the fees, it's just going to another company, so if we can buy a, a machine, I don't know if it's been in our capital budget, or how you've talked about doing this.
Well, no, I can buy it through the town clerk fund, yeah, we wouldn't have to...
If you can pay for it in a year, it sounds like that's a no-brainer to me, I just want to kind of address it from my perspective.
Right.
That, to me, seems like a no-brainer.
No, I, I would love to buy a copier, um, it's just having the staff to attend to the people who are using the copier and making sure people aren't, you know, making 50 copies and walking, and saying, "I made five copies."
But you might be able to automate it.
It does happen.
I think you should be able to automate it. I don't think that's that difficult.
Oh, okay, no, I would...
To be able to put a system on there to just, you know, pay with your credit card, but you get 100% of it, as opposed to the company's taking 30%.
Right, yeah, well, yeah, you could do that.
And actually, the, what I, other than that, because I've seen that in the other notes, Laura, I didn't know what other plans you were, you were referring to that you want to be looking to implement in the office, that right now you can't because of the limited risks.
Yeah, well, we have a lot of projects, um, the, the town clerk funds have, are really mounting up, and I want to use them to get all the images on the computer of the land records, and also, we have these big old indexes that are, they weigh like 25 to 30 pounds, and they need to be inputted on the computer, and we can have it all done, we can have it outsourced, but we, you know, have to get all the information together and write up the project, and, but, it could be ready to go as soon as everything calms down, and the project...
Well, we can, uh, we can use technology to do this, so that you don't have that body having to take care of some manual stuff, that actually sounds like a much more important project.
Right.
You know, to get a couple questions.
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to get records on the computer, um, a lot of towns already have all the records on their hair, and when people are searching from their office or their home, they can look at the documents, they can have the images on there, and all those projects are waiting to go, can't get to, I guess.
Thank you.
I'm in great smoke.
Anyone else? So, the ask is 20 hours, with a consideration for 15 and 35 hours.
35 hours, yeah.
Now, I think managing part-time help is complicated, in my own experience, and I was, um, just wanted to be a devil's advocate on the real merit of going from 20 to 15 from a management perspective. How would you manage that? Would you go four days at five hours, or, or whatever it is?
Well...
Three days at five hours, is it a five-day thing, is it a three-day thing?
Yeah.
How's it help the vacant office?
I would do like three hours, I like it, someone to come in every day, if they really wanted to have one day off, I'd probably do like Friday or something, but I like to spread it out, I don't like to cram all their hours into one, two days.
And you think you could hire someone to work three hours a day?
Yeah, well, we have in the past.
Okay, I'm just asking, it seems like...
I, I know.
Couldn't be bothered, I think, even from a management point of view.
My experience is that there are a lot of people who could just, yeah, do something three, four hours a day.
That's fine, if the work is okay.
And I know we're splitting hairs, it's four grand a year.
It's okay, no, I understand.
So, I, you know, from my perspective, I could go either way, but I think if you ask me which way, I would rather keep the hours the way they are.
Right.
In total, giving you the five to the 30 and reducing down to 15, that would be my preference, but I'm not gonna stand on ceremony for five hours.
I would love that, that'd be great. Um, back, I was gonna say, back in 1992, um, there were three 35-hour people, there was a 20-hour person, and there was a 15-hour person, so, there were two retirements that year, and that's when the office was cut to 20 hours, so we lost that one full-time person, and it spread out, so, yeah.
You don't have a big department, and, and I, you know, from my perspective, that's one of the reasons why I'm gonna support this, because you are limited staff, I can see that.
And it's all customer service.
It is all customer service, and I will say this, you guys do a really good job.
Thank you.
And even before you were there, Laura, they did a great job, too.
Yeah.
It's just a really good department, when I, I go in there, you know, on and off, and just really great people, friendly, they're very good at service, and you do deal with a lot of important things, so, you know, I appreciate that.
Thank you. We're good at training other people, too, so, they have good customer service skills.
It's your own, listen, George is in the room, if you want to holler at him, he's back there, he's stealing your employee.
No, I tell you, that's all right, we're used to it, we're used to it now. I guess the only comment I was gonna make on time for question, Laura, if you're in a position to need to hire somebody, when is your position being vacated?
When is the position being vacated?
The 30-hour one?
The 30-hour, uh, June 18th.
Oh, fine, okay, so it's not as if we have to make a decision tomorrow night, so you can advertise a 35 or 30-hour position?
Right, now, in 2011, when Patty came on board with the town, both those positions were vacated as well, and we had to fill two positions back then, too, so, um, you know, we did that, and, you know, we're just, we're used to doing it, but I'd like to put it into that.
Yeah.
And replace the people.
If I may, that was sooner would be better, because we end up with a very busy month of June, and if we were to take on new people right at the beginning of June, that would be a problem. If we could get them up and running with some training and report, then that would be ever so much better.
Well, I think I completely understand that, I was just thinking in terms of, you know, you've got to advertise in a week or something, just to, you know, like, she's, she's leaving next week, you gotta find somebody. That's what I, I didn't know how, you know, the time.
Definitely sooner would be better.
Vacancies occur.
So we could get somebody started.
Right, okay. Anyone else? So we're good with you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone.
So now, we're going to make room for Public Works.
George, just because we are nice staff, that doesn't mean we're going to do this. Get ready.
And we do know it's...
Scott doesn't have, yeah, I want us to sit here, Scott. Yeah, because we're going to do wastewater treatment after that.
They really did.
Public Works first.
Come on up. Do you have another gentleman there?
Yeah, he's in a club with the wastewater treatment.
Always the wastewater treatment.
Yeah, I couldn't eat that because I have a lot of...
The 82 is the, 82 is the little book, the Public Works.
And it's 115.
But it's listed as, it's listed as 84, but it's 82.
The proofreader, the proofreader. I'm having floaters today.
82 and 115, 82 is the small book.
Yeah, 80. I did look at it, but it didn't fit. I was just going to give a quick financial overview and then turn it over to these guys I did the other night. If you turn to page 115, you see that the Public Works budget is going up very slightly, just under 2%, and caused me to go back and look at what their increases have been in the past. I did not look at the 17 and 18, but that distorts the numbers, because that's when they absorb the parts division, but going from 2012 through 2016, their average increase per year was 1.63% for $84,000. So they've had a very, I think, successful run in terms of managing efficiently, you know, but also providing high-quality services. The other thing is, one of those years, the Public Works budget actually went down. Now, this budget is pretty tight as well, and this budget's pretty tight as well, but the increases in salary accounts are just pretty much driven by contractual changes. The other thing is, is that the only major increase in the non-salary accounts are in snow and ice. $50,000 is budgeted for program materials, which is the salt and sand account, primarily the salt, and then I think there's about another 14,000 or 15,000 in snow and ice for overtime. And the only other division that's increasing is solid waste, and it's really a function of the solid waste contract going up. And we met, we, the Marnettes and myself, met with the two-thirds of the solid waste committee on Thursday, David, the chairman, and Peter, and we have been working for two years, you have two hours, two years, on a successor agreement for solid waste, and we think we have at least the makings of an attractive change in the funding arrangements, and we have a summary for that in the decision package. But since we want to get into some details, we'd like to discuss that at the end of the meeting in executive session. George and Walter will take over the high points, but then we'll get into the nuts and bolts of it, because we still need some guidance and direction from you all. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that there are two, there's one vacancy in this budget. It's a maintainer, which George will speak to, and he has his decision package laid out on that one. And also, we are requesting a new position, engineering technician, and we'll explain that, but because of the way the arrangement of moving bodies works, it actually saves us money because of the way that we structured this. What happened is Walter was going to retire. Well, you know what? We'll get to the decision package, and then you'll see it, because the numbers are there, okay? Walter was going to retire, and then when he heard I was retiring, he decided to stay. So that was...
What does that tell you?
That was what captured us, but we're happy.
Oh, cool, he's leaving on Saturday.
But the other thing that George will speak to is, I had to take $80,000 out of this budget for rehabilitation of the truck, and I did recommend that we charge it to a special revenue account for our excavation permits. Money is held, but we'll get to that also when we get to that section of the budget. So all in all, the budget is really tight. George and Walter have done a great job, I think, of containing costs. One of the things that was noteworthy is a significant reduction in consulting expenses. I think it was 20 to 25,000 dollars. Last year, we had to take on the new storm water management initiatives, and 40,000 of it, I think, was energy costs, I'm sorry, engineering costs alone, and between Walter and his staff, Ramon Walter and his staff, they more than cut that in half. So they've worked really hard to keep things very, very modest and also bring a lot of work that we used to outsource in-house, so, and I'll let Walter get into that later, but with that, I'll turn it over to George, and we'll start working through the decision packages, if that's okay? If you have questions, as we go along, for the numbers, we go back to the book, but it's pretty much an amazing pleasure.
Sure, thanks for meeting with us, we appreciate it. Appreciate the time. Well, as Michael said, we'll work through these decision packages, and any questions you can answer, we'd be happy to do so as we go through. I'll tee it up for Walt, I'll do the hard part, and tell him that he did a lot of work on the automated trash collection, so he should, he should take the, take the lead on this one and tell you a little bit about it.
Yeah, I kind of just want to hit the highlights, because I think, because it's a negotiation, I think, obviously, some parts of it probably should be done in executive session, but basically, you know, the trend in the industry is to go to automated pickup. You know, manual pickup is kind of fading out, there's less and less folks that are doing that because of the high cost of labor and insurance. So we have worked, as Michael said, with AJ over the last year and a half, really trying to craft a, an extension that would be beneficial to both the town and to, you know, to them. So I would say that what's shown here is that net increases of over a half a million dollars over seven years is significantly more savings for the town than when we first started out. You know, we had an idea of what we felt the savings were there, and so that we wanted to see a higher proportion of those accrued at the town. So that, this has kind of been a, so there, in the pro forma that we've ended up with, there are several years where there's going to be no increase, and then others just a standard increase. In addition, work not accounted for in that half a million dollars is that, you know, the containers would, you know, be, and I should say, I'm sorry, the savings are half, one and a half million dollars, even including the fact of the town paying for a half a million dollars worth of containers over seven years. So there's actually more savings in that. And so therefore, basically, people would, you know, be provided a container, much like the recycling program, free of charge, and I just think it's a, it's the way of the future, number one. It actually saves us money over what we, how we would have been doing it, and as I said, in several of the out-years, there'll be no increase at all for the residential component.
Associated with that, Walter, are you, are you including TIP fees? Because those, those change, okay? So there's aspects of this.
These are the, you know, these are the TIP fees, yeah.
Kind of factored in, what they might change over time?
Yes, like I said, in the actual pro forma, for several of the years for residential pickup, there's no increase in TIPs, frozen for several of the years.
Okay.
And, you know, for, for the non-residential, the schools, the condos, town buildings, which are a much smaller part of it, you know, those have, those have increases each year.
I thought there were things the hauler didn't have enough control over, like TIPs. I mean, doesn't the...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, TIPs, no, you're correct in that.
Right, because those are going to change.
Right.
So, so we have to sort of ignore the savings?
Yeah, I mean, that part is going to be whatever it is.
They could be erased by TIPs, yeah. That's the kind of thing in seven years that could be very different.
Right, right.
Right, I'm sorry.
I thought you said pickup fees, but yes, TIPs are outside of it and really aren't going to make a difference, really. I mean, whether, whether they be automated or manual, you know, they're going to have the same tons.
But the key there is that we broke those out of the contract, and we broke them out for a reason, and that was because there was no incentive for the hauler to worry about the cost of the TIPs, because he was just going to pass them on to us. So with the arrangement we have, the people on the facility, because it's the five towns' chief executive officers, obviously, we have an interest in protecting those and keeping them as low as they can, because we're paying. And I think that was one move we made about eight or nine years ago that helped a lot. And what we've also done, which the hauler probably wouldn't have done, is put a cap on what the increase can be each year, so it's a minimum of 1.75 and I think, I think a maximum of three and a half percent.
Well, I think I heard, well, you didn't say it here, but I think one of the reasons you're advocating also for automated is that it might increase the recyclable amounts and potentially lower the volume for tipping fees, so our tipping fees could go down. I know you kind of said they might be the same just a minute ago. And one of your reasons for going forward in your decision package is that you're suggesting that we might have lower tipping fees because people will recycle more. Is that accurate or not?
More, less tonnage.
I get that. Tipping fees stay the same, but you're going to have less tonnage because people will recycle more. Is that an expectation? Is that something that generally happens? When people go from non-automatic to automatic?
I don't think there'll be a significant change there.
Well, then we shouldn't put it in our decision package, then, because that's one of the statements that you made as to why we should consider this.
Well, I think the hope is, you know, right now, you can put out a lot of trash cans, and contractually, you're limited to a certain number, but the truth is that our hauler picks up as many as you put out many times.
Oh, I see, right.
So right now, if you go to this, you're going to have a 96-gallon container, and that's all you're going to get. You can't put bags next to it or anything, it's got to, it's got to go up into the truck in one shot. So the hope is that if, you know, people are putting recyclables in the trash, that they'll, they'll move the recyclables to a recycling container and leave more room for actual trash.
That's the sign, a 96 gallon.
That, that would be the, that's the sign that you're just in recycling.
Yeah, but we have varying sizes of recycling.
We have two.
Yeah.
And we don't have a lot of the 64, and we found that many of the people who wanted them, once they had the 96-gallon container, were pretty happy with it and didn't come back and ask for the smaller container. The other thing is, and we'll talk about this as part of the whole development, is because the committee did ask about that, going with a smaller container. You don't have to push trash out every week, just because they come every week, you know? But again, that's a discussion issue.
Yeah. I mean, if you, you know, if you put a 64-gallon container out, that would promote recycling even more. I'm not necessarily advocating for that, but the smaller the trash can you give people, the more they would have to recycle or somehow move things out of the, out of the waste.
What size is the recycle, the big recycling?
96.
So you're saying on an automatic, that's the best anyone's going to get? And I have a family of five. There ain't no way in heck I can limit myself to a 96, you know, with my trash.
That's about three standard trash cans, but most trash cans about 33 gallons.
Yeah, well, this is, this is...
Alls I want, I just think we need to have, we need to consider, are we going to be really hamstringing the public with forcing them to go into a 96?
That's right.
You know, I think that's our relevant point. I mean, we need to talk about it. There's some families out there that are going to have trash building up everywhere. I mean, all right, so alls, we'll take what fits into that one container, what do they do with the rest of it? I mean, as you can tell by looking at me, I like DM.
But it shouldn't be my place.
Well, we did talk about with the committee is, this is, this is one big unknown, and this is something that we'll talk about further, provided you want to go down this road. Do you give two containers? Do you make an exception and give a smaller container? We already talked to AJ about that, and, you know, he's prepared to do whatever we have to do to make everyone, you know, comfortable.
Well, let's say as far as the smaller containers, when the recycling came out, I think there were 200 people that requested a smaller container, and after the two months' moratorium, I think less than 100 switched, out of 8100.
I think there's a difference between recycling and...
No question about that.
And you're dealing with no odor, you're dealing with odor, you're dealing with another size, two 96-gallon containers in a garage or outside or however, versus, yeah, there's a, there's a difference in that.
I just have one more question. Oh, sure. Well, I know that you said the 500,000 cost of containers is included in the overall savings of 506 in seven years. How, how quick do we recoup the 500 for the containers? It's got to be obviously...
No, I did that over the seven-year extension, so...
But what you're saying is, over seven years, you're getting 506,000 of savings, including the payback of...
Yeah, so the savings, the savings for the seven years is over.
I get that. So what I'm saying is, though, how quick can we get the first 500 back? Because it's got to be in three and a half years. I'm trying to see how quick we get back the first 500 that we're putting out.
It's at the end of '23.
Do you have it in here somewhere?
No, you'll have it in the handout we give you when we go into executive session.
You understand my question?
Yeah, yeah, and what we show is savings year by year by year, over seven years. So you could see at the point where the aggregate savings breaks the $500,000 threshold.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
That's what I figured out, we put 500,000, I think it's two years, three years, five years to get effect?
The other thing, too, and you'll see this when we go into executive session, there is the possibility that you can move some money around. We asked for them to design this so that there'd be some front-loaded savings and then savings in the middle year. You could decide that maybe that's not the way you want to see the savings distributed and ask them to vary it in some other way. So that's something else, we'll see when we get to the handout.
Anyone else? Have you done with the trash code?
Next.
All right, I'll take the next one. This one should be...
Page four?
This is page four.
Page four.
This is the modification of the residential hazardous waste disposal. This should be fairly quick, it's, it's pretty, pretty cut and dry, but currently, we, we work with the Regional Water Authority, Hazardous Central Operation down on Sardine Drive in New Haven. They're open about 22 weekends a year. Cheshire residents have the ability to go down there any of those weekends between mid-May and October and drop off any hazardous materials, oils, paints, any, any kind of thing that comes out of your garage or basement, and...
Nice.
Yeah, nice, yeah. And the town, the town pays just about $23,000 a year right now for that service. There is an option to go with the Dogg Tech Valley Council of Governments, which have a similar program. The difference in this program is, A, it's much cheaper, it's about 30, it's estimated to be about $3,100. The main difference is the level of service or the amount of service you get. You get three collections a year through the frequency of service. You get three collections a year through one, through three of the council of government locations. So if you flip the page, you get into page five, there's a map that kind of, kind of gives you a little graphic detail of what I'm trying to explain, but you can see Cheshire in the middle. If you go directly south, you'll see a point down there, and it's the Regional Water Authority point, it's about 15 miles away from Cheshire. If you continue that circle out to the west, you can see you start to pick up the Dogg Tech Valley Council of Government towns, and that, three of those towns will have a collection every year. So which three, who knows at this point, but...
So we could go to Bethlehem or Thomas?
Correct. You could, you could be a little further away, if Thomas and Bethlehem, Southbury, one of those towns is the pickup point, but in general, it would be in the, in the vicinity. But again, you, you get three collections a year and, which is a reduction. But again, you get three collections a year, which is a reduction.
I do think that what they try to do is vary them just so that they're not all concentrated in one area for one year. So that's unlikely, but anything can happen.
So have we ever been in contact with RWA to find out the statistics? Because they take, they, as you come in, because I go annually, they check your license. They also make you fill out a form so that they know what town you are from. And have we ever gone to them and said how many residents of Cheshire actually participated? Do we know?
It varies. We have 10-year projections from them, but it varies. They're skewed because some years we've had a collection in town. You obviously get a lot more people in the district, but in any given year, we're in the 300 range.
I didn't see that either.
You know, it might be 350, it might be 275. It just depends on the year, but it's in that, in that range.
Do we know when we, the last time we had it here in town, it was accompanied over on, is it Leighton did it? It was over on West Johnson. So it's got to be about, probably about five years ago that we did one in town. And it was an organization that sponsored it.
Correct, but that wasn't true. The Regional Water Authority might have participated, but it wasn't a town-funded operation.
Yeah, they used to have satellite...
Well, I know we did.
Yeah, and we used to pay for that, and then we dropped it because it was doubly expensive and it wasn't proving to be all that much effective.
So we could be a point of one of the three days?
One of the three towns.
Yes.
Okay. And where would you hold it?
We'd get hold of our city or the transfer station there somewhere. It's a moving, it's a mobile operation.
You just need a big parking area that has a circular driveway and easy access.
A lot of people in Hasnan.
Yeah, yeah.
Why is, why is the CAGs so much cheaper? I mean, you've got to pay to get, look at that stuff.
Well, I mean, first of all, they only have three events. Yeah, it's not continuous. So it's, you know, so it's heavy volume and only three times.
And Hasway's does a more permanent facility, and they've got a facility with a roof over the tanks and everything out there. These collections are, they back up a truck and you dump your stuff in there, depending on different, whatever, segments of the truck and off you go, kind of thing.
Does a lot of company have a record of 22 weeks of the collections made in New Haven? Only Cheshire has, only Cheshire has 22 weeks?
They may get that for us. Well, I can check.
Yeah, I don't know. If Cheshire participates in all of the 22 weeks, four or five a week.
But you did say about 300 Cheshire people. You have some kind of, some kind of a head count.
Right.
But that's the average.
Yeah.
One of them is, yeah.
And one of those Patty, you've been doing it forever.
Exactly. Ever since the league supported them, and we, the league used to be the hosts when they...
Now Patty, just getting into behavioral science here. Do you go once a year?
Yeah.
Okay. So you're not apt to go three times a year just...
No, it's normally, you know, it's kind of like spring cleaning or at the end of the year, because it's, you know, all, any of the stuff that really has to be recycled, pesticides, pesticides, any, you know, cans, everything, that type of thing. Paint that doesn't, not make that, that type of thing.
And one thing, if the switch was made, I mean, we'd still be in South Central through June 30th.
Yeah.
That's the fiscal year, technically, is how it'll operate.
Yeah, so the first year wouldn't be as much of an adjustment.
And that's not a contract they're set. We made a decision to do this, and it was a terrible decision. It could always revisit when it's up.
Three-year non-binding agreement.
Right now, you've got a three-year non-binding agreement with Hasway Central down at the RWA, and you can break that anytime.
And I would think they'd take us back because because you're on the board, I would hold the...
Yeah, well, I, yeah. I didn't know, I didn't know we took our, could take our stuff there. I don't know why. Just a fellow.
One of the things with that is...
I tore the swamp.
Tell me that.
Repeat that, please.
Went by the reservoir?
Don't say that. I'll have somebody call me tomorrow and say, "Why is he getting away with that?"
It's funny. I just have to have it.
Yeah.
One of the things, Merritt had just joined the Regional Water Authority and Hasway Central, and they had to, there is a capital fund there that Cheshire's paid into, and there's some amount of money in there, so Merritt had to contribute an upfront cost. So if you backed that completely and took the money out of it, which I can get you the amount, I can't remember what it was, but I want to say they end up, they have to pay 20 or $30,000 or something just to kind of get in the first. They need a roof or a tank replacement.
Right. Is it your recommendation that we make this switch or just throwing it out there?
I'm honestly just throwing it out there. We've had no issues with Hasway's. The cost is, admittedly, what the cost is, but it is based on usage. So you only pay for the amount of people who use it minus a flat fee they have just for the replacement. It's, we've never had a complaint down there that I can recall about the service or anything else, and so I, it's just a point for you folks to mull over and see if...
I'll speak up, though. I recommend it. I mean, anything that we can do to save money without diminishing services dramatically, I think is really worth pursuing and considering very seriously. I mean, and people are inconvenienced a little bit, but they're not losing service.
And you know, with the savings, we could bring back both the waste and the fourth district.
We'd have to multiply this by 15.
In the what district?
Here's another thing. Four. I'm not a CAG guy. And Tosh not here.
Just on my lack of...
He's not a CAG guy either. So my question is, are we just giving CAGs more to do so they can get more to do, so they can get bigger? Is this part of the expansion of CAG?
I don't know.
It's a philosophical question, but every, you know, I was here, we join CAGs because we can get buying goals. You know, we can buy more stuff cheaper or something like that. Buy less stuff cheaper, whatever it is. I just wondered if this is an expansion of their responsibilities.
No, they've been doing it for a while.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, this isn't new. It's just that for us now, we're looking at it for the first time. I don't know how many years they've had this service, but it's been there for a while.
Okay, good. So it's you guys trying to save money? Part of your try?
Yeah.
Very good.
Want to give you the options.
Seems to me that hazardous waste, you don't need to offer a lot of opportunities to do it. I would think three would be plenty. I think most people would be like Patty. Even if you did it twice a year, one different times a year, I mean, I don't think we need to have 22 weeks.
Well, yeah.
Available.
The other thing is, is that this isn't like 1960 when everything opened, with kerosene or alcohol or, you know, turpentine, and you had, I mean, now it's hard to find products in a lot of people's houses.
You would be surprised on a Saturday, the stuff that goes in.
I know. You know why? It's been in the garage for 15 years.
Exactly.
Yeah, not because it's anything new.
But you do it once, and if you really clean up your garage well, then you're not adding more of that product as much anymore. You don't have to do it regular times.
People really have to stock it up before they justify it before they, they're not going down there to get rid of one quart of oil.
No. But there's no limitation on what you can bring, right?
There are some, there are some things you cannot bring.
It's page six by page.
No, but within what's allowed, you can bring as much as you want.
So moving right along on to page six. This is a decision to eliminate the residential leaf collection program. Again, just to throw it out as an opportunity if you wish to look at it. The net impact is a savings of about $15,500 in Public Works budget. The backstory to this, about 65% of our residents take advantage of the leaf collection. So it's a sizable number.
So you're really pissing a lot of people off, $15,000.
For 15 grand.
Yeah. So it obviously would save, save money. That would be one of the benefits of the decision. Save some crew hours that we could, we could use to finish roadwork, sidewalks, all different types of things that time of year when the season's getting short. The impact of not implementing, of implementing it would be, the residents would have to hire a private contractor to dispose of the leaves, dispose of the leaves on their own property, or take them down a reservoir road, dump them off, or whatever, you know, whatever they wish to do.
That's what I was going to say. We'll end up having to clean them up somewhere else.
Exactly.
Stuff in the catch basin.
What's the truck rental?
The truck rental's about $12,500.
I know, but what is the truck rental?
We rent a trash truck to go around.
Okay. So they can throw those in?
Right, throw them in at a low level so we don't get back injuries.
Why can't H.J. do that for Chumchash? Part of the contract?
H.J. used to do that when I started here, but he, it was, it was a savings at the time, and I can't, I can't recall how much.
He can't do it.
It was savings, but it was, you know, we do it cheaper than H.J. did at the time.
Okay. Because we're taking them to landfill, right?
No, we're taking them up to Wilken.
Or someplace like, but it's ace.
Private location up there, compost.
I was going to say, there's got to be a compost place that would kill the hazards.
Yeah.
George, I recall seeing one of our dump trucks loaded with bags of leaves heading up towards Wilken last year. So do you transfer them into our dump trucks and not use trash trucks?
At times we will. It depends on if we've got a lot of things out in the middle of the pickup. Sometimes we'll go up and just dump it in the yard and then transfer them into a dump truck to run them up there so we're saving time so the truck can go back out on the route and keep cycling around because you've got one truck to do half a 10 at a time essentially.
I remember seeing one last year, and that was, it was loaded with bags of leaves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe H.J. could sell us a truck, $12,000.
Yeah.
Would there be much of a savings to cut down to the number of route runs we're doing around?
Not tremendously because we have to rent a truck for a month at a time, basically.
That's where I was going. And I didn't formulate that right, so it's about a month at a time.
Yeah, we end up renting for six weeks where we kind of massage it, and the vendor has worked with us in the past.
And I, I'm not advocating this, but I'm curious because I see other towns have this service. Other towns have worked, you know, people can just, you know, they basically get the leaves to the curb and then the town comes along and with a vacuum and just sucks them up or does whatever. Just out of curiosity, what, do you have any of what that costs for other municipalities? I mean, what that costs to have that service?
Yeah, I don't know what the cost is, but it's, it's, you need specialized equipment in portion, your truck with a box and a...
Right, right, right.
And I, all I hear amongst my peers is it's fraught with damage. You know, people inevitably will have a brick in there or a cinder block.
Well, the other problem is it snows. You have, you have the curbside, you have a heavy snowstorm, and now you're not, you don't know whether you're pushing leaves or pushing snow or picking up snow or picking up leaves, and then it gets icy. And the other problem you have is, in some cities and towns, the roads are wide enough where you can get away with it. You think about some of our roads, South Rocksville Road. You put leaves on both sides of that street, and you now have a one-lane road.
And they're not going to stay in the files because of the train loads. We just paid $19,000 on the CAG decision.
I'm just curious. I know, I know we're not, I know we're not going in that direction. I was just curious. I see other towns have that service, and I was just curious what the cost of that is. Because you see what some of the towns provide as services, and you get a feel for what, you know, what those towns are providing from a perspective versus what we're providing.
It's a lot of man-hours, but it's, once you buy the equipment and it stays, it stays operational, you can string that over many years, but the problem is, that's all I hear is people saying, you know, there's a bowling ball in there or, you know.
Well, the other problem is...
Something for the file.
It's another pile of stuff to get into the sewers.
Oh, yeah. A lot of...
It's a mess.
Well, it's a mess. I'm just curious.
And George, I just said, when I was growing up in Jersey, we'd break them out to the street and then light them.
Yeah, they were always bonfire. Yeah, and you knew there was a bonfire.
Oh, yeah, you know when the leaves...
Right out there.
Stay classy, Drew.
That's amazing.
All right, number...
Page seven?
Yeah, number seven.
Okay. I'll start this and then I'll turn it over to Walter and to George because there's a backstory here. Walter had identified the fact that he was going to retire on June 30th, and he's had so much fun doing this job that he found that he couldn't retire. Actually, what happened is, unfortunately, Dennis, Dennis got sick, and Dennis had to retire very abruptly. And Walter has been a key link between Public Works and the Waste Water Treatment Plant, and he's always been the man behind the scenes. I mean, he was the one who got the referendum passed. Walter went out and convinced people of the benefits of it. Walter's the guy who oversaw the construction, the upgrade, when we had an $800,000, what was it, asbestos issue?
PCBs.
PCBs, and he still got the project in under budget. And so his service to us and his role is so critical that when we realized we were going to lose Dennis, we were very concerned. And while we can replace possibly, well, I don't know if we could ever replace Dennis, but we could find somebody who's capable of filling. That support from engineering is so critical to that facility, especially now until we finish the last two pump stations, that to lose Walter at this time would be very disruptive, especially with the new superintendent coming on board. Walter obviously didn't want to work the current level of hours that he's working, and so what we asked him to do is to consider something that he thought would be reasonable on a month-to-month basis, which will be sufficient for him to do all the oversight work and all of the signing and everything else because we need a PV by charter. And what we came up with is a way to retain Walter in a, you know, a limited capacity, make sure all of the things that have to be tended to are. But the problem is, is that his staffing is going to be reduced dramatically because his hours are being reduced. And so what was suggested is that we add another position and we classify the two individuals who are there now. So I walked you through what we are proposing, and you can see the changes, and actually it'll save money. When, if you were to look at the dollar amount being paid in '18 right now, Town Engineer Operations Manager is Walter. We have Assistant Town Engineer who is paid $81,533, and an Engineering Technician Dan who is paid $65,206. When George proposed the budget, we had no idea that Dennis was going to be leaving so abruptly, and we expected that Walter would be retiring. So we reconfigured the salaries based on the Town Engineer Operations Manager working full-time. Walter works about 24 hours a week, man, so this would be 35 hours a week for a Town Engineer Operations Manager. And then the Assistant Town Engineer and the Engineering Technician would just increase by whatever the radius in their contract or, well, Donna's a 90-minute employee, so there's a modest increase of whatever he averages. And so what was in the budget when George presented it to me was a total of $253,000 for staffing the Engineering Department, assuming Walter was going to retire. Walter has indicated that he would be happy to stay on. He would work about 20 hours a month, and so his title would no longer be Town Engineer Operations Manager, it would just be Town Engineer. The thing is, is that somebody'd have to pick up the slack in the office, and that's quite a need to add that new position. So what would happen is, his assistant would take on the additional responsibilities of Operations Manager at 87, 68 in the morning. The Engineering Technician would take on the additional responsibilities of being the Associate Town Engineer, I'm sorry, the Associate Town Engineer. of being the Associate Town Engineer, I'm sorry, the Associate Town Engineer, and then we'd have an Engineering Technician also, so the cost of this would be a little bit cheaper, it's about fourteen thousand dollars in salary, less, less than the current operation. Walter has indicated that he would likely wanna stay on in this capacity for a couple of years or more, so it wouldn't be a one-time issue, but we'd then have to go back and find a Town Engineer. The other thing is, and these two facts are pretty modest, but I can tell you, the thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars that they've saved since they reconfigured Public Works Department and separated the Engineering Division, and brought in some really qualified and competent people, and on the page that is adjacent to this, I'm sorry, the next page, page eight, Walter and George just sort of listed in some rise, a lot of the few things that they've done in-house that have saved us a considerable amount of money, and I had two concerns when, when I was dealing with this, one was the fact that there wouldn't be a bridge to the Wastewater Treatment Plant, not that George can't do it, but George's plate is filled probably more than anyone else's, and you need that support from his office, especially with a new superintendent, but the other thing, which I didn't want to lose sight of, is all of the incredible work that comes out of the Engineering Department, which would be affected if there was the departure of Walter or not, his presence to continue to manage and oversee an operation that's gonna grow, and people are gonna take on a little more responsibility, but having his hand there to guide them, I think we've ensured that we have the continuity and the maintenance of the innovation that has, has been very, very pervasive, and again, not that George can't do it, but George, you know, he's got an immense amount on his plate, so that's, that's pretty much the upshot of it all, and then Walter and George could sort of touch on some of the specifics.
Could I just take it a step further in the proposed, say for example, Walter's has vacated, but we now have an Engineering Technician, Associate, and Assistant Town Engineering Manager, are we technically, what would the budget be there, I think closer to three hundred thousand dollars?
We'd have to, well.
So we're four, five years, we're talking about reducing a position in that, in that office?
Well, possibly, or what, what we would, what we're thinking of is a contractual PE, because since the charter requires us to have one, they don't have to be on staff as an employee, but they have to be named according to the research that George, did George met with Al Smith to go over this, to see what variations of things we can do, is that correct?
Yeah, much like Town Attorney, you name a person in a firm, it's, it'd be similar to that. Walt can speak more to it, but I'll, I'll stir your thunder a little bit, Walt doesn't see a lot of plans, you know, it's a, it's a, it's an oversight that we have, but it's not, it's not a requirement, you wouldn't need a lot of hours from somebody to, to be a physical engineer, design engineer or something.
You need the designation more than anything else, so that we don't violate the charter.
Okay.
So does that position have to be certified, in good standing with the State of Connecticut?
I mean, you have to have a licensed engineer, yeah.
But I know they expire against people.
Annually, yeah.
So, but there be no liability on your license personally, the liability would be on your account?
Right, right, I mean, I wouldn't be operating as an LLC or anything, I should be, you know, an employee.
No, no different than it is now.
Right, he would stay as an employee.
My point is, if the Town Engineer's stamping something, he's stamping it for the town, and the town's, you don't have to carry additional insurance.
No.
Or cover it with, with the town.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, you know, just to kind of jump in here, but, you know, it's been certainly great work with Michael and George, but, you know, and very honestly, you know, Dan and Don have been wonderful, you know, and I think those guys are more than up to the task to do, you know, what, what we'd be asking them to do, I think there's certain things, you know, just by, by law, that have to be certified by a professional engineer, I mean, things like when we did, when we redid Mixville Dam, the storm, the MS-IV plan, you know, right now we're going through this whole bike accreditation thing, you know, a number of things like that actually require a PE, so really, what this does is kind of minimize the amount of time that you're paying for a PE, and frankly, using a lower-class person to do everything else, you know, so I, I've certainly been working with these guys long enough, I feel very comfortable that they, they take, you know, they take guidance well, you know, they're hard workers, and I, I think, you know, and I'm not trying to beat our drum, but I guess I will, I mean, on page eight, I mean, in the last five years as a group, you know, we've gotten sixteen million dollars of grants, you know, four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars of in-house services that we did, that we would've had to contract out if we didn't have the skill set we had here, and then, you know, going forward, you know, year after year, two hundred and eighty-five thousand in savings, so I think, you know, it's, it's frankly the story that, you know, why, why break up a good team, I think we're doing what, you know, the Town Council wants us to do, of putting quality projects out there, but, you know, being very diligent with saving money, and so this would, this would kind of meet those objectives, you know, and frankly, and I've seen my time really kind of centered between, you know, the WPCA and energy projects, those are probably the things that I do the most, and frankly, you know, those other guys, you know, pull on, you know, the rest of it.
So from, from that perspective of your time, and a good portion takes a place with the WPCA, is there an opportunity to have the WPCA pay for a half of Walt's salary?
Sure, that's, we even talked about that.
Yeah.
That's a very, that's very viable, absolutely, yeah, yep, and I don't think there's any problem, I think they'd be happy to do that, I mean, we could've charged back his salary now, for all, all the time and effort he's put in over the years, we've probably recovered it an indirect cost, Jim, somewhat, but we've never charged it yet, yeah. Okay, we do put together an administrative.
What's part of that?
To justify the transfer of money from the Wastewater Treatment.
I think it's important, just for taxpayers to understand where the resources of personnel are spending their time, and the allocations are, are, are be clear and transparent, no different, we talked about this with the Board of Education, if we have a resource officer, if we have the Department of Human Services, whoever is spending time, that should be reflected in that particular department, division.
Yes, that's a very good suggestion, and that is something we could do, talk about it, and it makes good sense.
And so this, you know, proposal that we're talking about now, as Michael said, is actually fourteen thousand dollars less than what's in the draft budget, so it's actually safe to count something like that.
Yeah, my question is, really following up where Tim was going, what I'm concerned about is that, you know, Walt, when you finally decide to really leave, and we have you for zero hours, are you suggesting that we would only be putting a consultant on for similar hours that Walt would be in, because otherwise, we've inflated, you know, you'd have to get rid of another salary, like Tim was saying, we'd be up around three hundred thousand dollars, I'm not sure that's what we want to be.
Yeah, I, I think the intention is certainly that, you know, either you find another old guy like me, or a woman like me, or, or, you know, contract it out.
Because I hate to see us hiring an Engineering Technician, and then when you decide to leave, we go back to hiring a full-time Operation Manager at a hundred and ninety-five thousand, and now we gotta tell this person, thanks, but no thanks, we don't need you anymore.
No, we're not, not talking about going from three divisions to four.
So the succession plan is, when you decide to give your twenty hours a month away, we can deal with that with an outside consultant who has a PE, that can stamp what we need, and we'll get the same level of service?
We might have to pay more money, we probably have to pay forty, fifty thousand dollars, but, you know, the difference.
The hours would be similar, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, we, we would definitely have to pay more, but we wouldn't have to pay a hundred and ten, fifteen, twenty thousand.
With benefits.
For an engineer with benefits, and doing it this way, we continue to maintain the solidity of, of this bond that we have with this working group, and Walter as their, as their director.
Well, is that enough time, when the twenty hours a month is not a lot, is that enough time for you to be comfortable that you have a handle on enough things to be able to interject where you need to, I mean, you've done great things for us, I'm concerned though, twenty-four hours a week to twenty hours a month, that's a big change, and how do you oversee things well enough at twenty hours a month?
I, yeah, I'm very comfortable with the people that are doing it, I guess that's what it comes to answer, yeah, and also the fact that I'm, I'm local, you know, I mean, a lot of these things that might be an out, you know, something maybe say, hey, we got a question or a problem here, can you come in for an hour or two, you know, you don't have to stay all day, but it's like, hey, we've reached this roadblock, or where are we going with this, or, you know, we need to meet about something, so, you know, get spread out kind of that way.
So you're okay with that, I, I, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be doing it if you weren't, but I guess, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask, it's just, it's a big change, and I want to make sure you, you feel that's enough hours to do what you need to do.
I don't want to continue to see him discount himself, but the bottom line is, is that he works, he works a lot more than twenty-four hours a week, he likes what he does, and he'll come in on a Friday, and I'll say, don't forget to put that on the payroll, and I never see it, and so, I mean, that's the way he is, the other thing is, is that Walter has an immense amount of contacts, connections throughout this state, and he can expedite things in a way that nobody else can, and so he is efficient, I mean, you can take somebody to do something that could take them ten hours, Walter can do it in a fraction of the time, because he knows who to call, what to ask for, and, you know, what to provide in the way of information, and that's invaluable, I mean, he's cut through so much red tape for us.
One other question, what specifically would this Engineering Technician be doing? The new position?
I mean, what the, you know, really what the Engineering Tech does now, I mean, Dan is the Engineering Tech right, right now, so, I mean, he does a lot of the, you know, work on, work on roads, he does a lot of GIS stuff, frankly, he was the guy who did a lot of the modeling work, or call it, for the building firm software that we put online, he was that guy that programmed Dan, that whole.
Super.
Now you know.
Yeah.
No, it's actually good, he's doing that.
George needs it.
Good job.
I supervise. And I supervise.
To follow up on that, for example, I saw Don and Dan on Riverside Drive doing something with manholes.
Patches.
For the State of Connecticut, another mandated location of our sewer manholes or something they were doing?
Uh.
They were doing something, they said, the state, something the state's requiring, you know, you wonder how much time we, we spend doing things for the state, I think I do GIS stuff.
Yeah, yeah, they're locating, yeah, locating everything.
But my point is, you see them a lot together, will that change, will?
What you might see is, is Dan and the Engineering Tech work, I mean, they're both very good surveyors, so my guess is that, you know, Don would do less of that, Dan would do more, and he would be taking along the Engineering Tech as, as Rodman.
So he's, he's bringing that other person along with him, so those two are traveling more together than, than Don, working more in the building?
Yeah, Don would be taking more of Walt's day-to-day operations.
A question about the credentials of that tech, they have to, are they like engineers, full engineers, or just?
Uh, yeah, they really have technical training, but, you know, as far as you don't, you don't have that much experience, obviously, but, you know, we certainly, you know, I, I think that's a position that, you know, we've really done a good job upgrading, because he is so good at GIS, can do survey, you know, he can do quantity takeoffs, I mean, like I said, you know, there were three or four projects I listed in there, like Mountain Road and South Brooksville, I mean, basically those guys designed it, you know, I almost saw it and ended up stamping things and certifying, but if not, we'd have had to gone out, you know, we'd have had to gone out and spent fifty thousand dollars to pay some firm to do it, so, you know, it's a.
Anything else, just two, two good questions, on the, are these, are these salaries, do these include, what's the Engineering Technician, is that a full-time position? Okay, so, now, is this sixty-three, five, so, does that include benefits, or are the benefits on top of that?
Uh, yeah.
That's just a loss, loss.
But they were included in the budget when it was developed, but it's not listed here, yeah, all of the positions that we have in here were built into the employee benefit portion of the budget.
And then, is the Engineering Technician, so that's not someone who's currently off, is that someone, either?
Right, right now, I'm an Engineering Tech, an Assistant Town Engineer myself.
Right, so those people would sort of, that would then be the Assistant Town Engineer, Operation Manager would move up.
Basically, Dan and Don.
And then this position opens up for potentially someone to come in from the outside, or whatever, there's not someone in the office now.
They will get somebody from the Town Park's office.
Exactly. There's nobody there with over thirty-five hours yet, you gotta, you gotta wait for that, you gotta wait for someone to get up that kind of, that, that kind of skill.
All right, thank you. Anything else, we go on to another decision?
Next one?
Sure. Yep. Decisions out of Public Works.
Yeah, we're the deciders. This, this next one is near and dear to our hearts, and again, it's a, about a personnel decision, but we have a vacant maintainer position, which has been vacated since November of this past year, you can see the, the wages and the, the benefits, and we include snow and ice overtime, because that's non-voluntary overtime, it's mandatory overtime, so it kind of falls in line with that, for the total cost of that, that position is a, is an estimate. I'll tell you, kind of, I tried to do this a bunch of different ways, and I, I couldn't make it work, so I'll just kind of go down my list and try to justify this, we have, we're budgeted for eleven maintainers, we currently have ten, unstaffed, I tried to do some things with comparable towns, and miles of road per maintainer and stuff, and I, it doesn't really match up, because every town is so different in the way they stack the towns, but I can tell you, we're, we're pretty lean compared to, we're very comparable to any other town of our standard, there, this position's obviously critical in the winter, it directly affects the length of the plow routes in town, so that's a, just a reality, you need, the more people you put on a, on a crew, the, the less miles of plow route you have, the better service you have, the better you're able to take care of the town, recover from storms, and get people out of driving, and commerce moving, and all that stuff, and it, a lot of times, it comes down to a mile or two, and it doesn't sound like a lot, but each, each one of these, if you take away a person, each, each one of these people adds about a mile to the, to the adjacent routes through the town, and like I say, it doesn't sound like a lot, but when you figure that's a lane mile, so it's really two miles of, I'm sorry, it's a centerline mile, so it's really two miles when you figure each lane of road, and it just takes, you know, twenty miles an hour of these trucks of plowing, it takes a lot of time to cover twelve miles, which they currently have, and we're fully staffed, twenty, twenty, or, I'm sorry, twelve centerline miles, which is twenty-four lane miles, so to fully clear the road both ways, they have to drive twenty-four miles, which takes well over an hour, and it stops, and everything else, we've always got people out in the winter, it's just, ever since I've been here, it's a fact of like, there's injuries, people get sick, there's limited vacation, very limited vacation, because people do take vacations at times, so that's just a reality, this, this winter, we have another person out most of the winter, another maintainer out, sick most of the winter, which added to our woes.
Yeah, it's George driving.
So George, has this been identified simply for us, because we could look and say, oh, there's a place where we could say, because this is currently budgeted?
It is currently budgeted.
It's a vacancy that I don't recall Michael brought to our attention and said, are we raising this position, I just don't remember. A position like this?
The only positions I brought to your attention were the ones where there was pressure to fill them.
But, am I, I just do recall there was one in Public Works, I was?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I gave you.
I had just forgotten, I just forgot that Public Works was included in the mix, that's all, it's just my, my mental lapse, okay, it's fine.
And actually, you know, I mean, George had asked me, can I come forward, and I said, I said, the problem is, is we have these, these three part-time positions that we really desperately need to fill, and I said, given that the, the season is almost over as far as plowing, it's, it's harder to make the case for this maintainer, I said, let's wait and, and just see what happens, so this has been vacant for.
It's still a vacancy. Yeah, we actually, we did the right thing in limiting the town's liability by not having a gentleman work, I'm just saying, we tried to do the right thing.
It was a termination.
Yeah, and it, and it was gonna go badly for the town if something happened, and insurance issues and that kind of thing, so, so I, you know, we were trying to do the right thing, and, you know, and protect the town, which is our job, so anyway, going through the winter, just to finish up, so we maximize the grounds crew, with the, the combination of park and rec, the groundskeepers and the public works, we've got two of the groundskeepers driving dump trucks, we've got two of them on the sidewalk crew, pretty much full-time, and then we've got our crew leaders, which are different from maintainers, obviously, they go out and, and run all the cul-de-sacs and stuff, and there's, there's approaching two hundred cul-de-sacs in Cheshire, but a hundred and eighty, I'm gonna say, in that range, right now, it's, it's literally a town of cul-de-sacs, so, and those take a.
I've seen you on my cul-de-sac, in Florida, too.
Those take a long, long time to clear, compared to straight road, so, so we, I think we've got the crew, I know we've got the crew actioned out, and, and, you know, the way we need to best serve the town. and, you know, the way we need to best serve the town. So, taking away the winter, which is always the critical moment, the critical issue with anything, that's the most emergency-related thing we tend to do in public works. Spring, summer, fall, we've also got a lot of work for these guys. You know, right, right now, with the, again, with the parks, the way the parks have come down, this is our first spring. We're planning to put maintainers into the parks early in the spring. As we fertilize, we get things up, spread clay for the infills, line fields, all this stuff, because the groundskeepers are still cutting the grass, they're still doing all the good stuff they have to do, charging the sprinkler system. But some other people have to do kind of the grunt work of moving things around and getting, getting these fields playable and, you know, getting brush cut, anything that needs done.
The other thing, and I don't know if you mentioned it, is that you are that one person. When, when he absorbed the parks division, he only absorbed four of the five people that were there. The foreman, who is Kevin Simmons, retired, we eliminated the position. So, he's managing with one less already, and I just wanna mention that because that has made a difference. I mean, it's made it a little tougher, but he's made it work.
So, that's, you know, two thousand eighty man-hours that we have to account for somehow, which, which we're doing, and we're happy to do it. We took it on with that understanding that we're gonna have one person less. But a part of that understanding is we wanted to have all the maintainers so we could make these moves as we need to. So, again, in the spring, summer, and fall, outside of parks support, we've got the Vector, which the council was kind enough to purchase for us. So, that thing, you know, we've made a deal down there that that thing's going out every day. Right? You know, you're gonna see that thing on the road somewhere every day. It's gonna be a three-man crew.
When are we getting it?
We should get it late spring. I'm gonna say.
It's not like the fire's for three years later.
No, no, no. Like June, June timeframe, I'm gonna say that's, that's a.
Better because we took thirty-five thousand dollars out of the budget for next year for renting it. So, it is saving us immediate money as long as it arrives.
Right. But that's gonna go out every day. That was our commitment to you folks when you bought it, and we'll live up to that. Sweeping, we sweep all, early on in the spring, obviously, which takes a couple months through the town. Basin repair goes on all summer in preparation for paving, so there's a crew of at least four, and sometimes eight, depending on if we have to have two crews running sidewalks. We're patching, replacing sections of the sidewalk, paving support, waterways, emergencies with storms, trees, all these kinds of things.
George, did I ever bring up that asphalt sidewalk you guys did on Arm Court?
Yeah, we fixed that, right?
I didn't even get a rise out of Michael on that one. He didn't even flinch.
We had a patch in there, right? We fixed that, I think. I hope we did.
We did?
We'll fix that.
No, I just, I didn't even get a rise out of Michael on that. I figured I'd get something.
But anyway, so the, my, my point is, the person's not gonna be, you know, after, after the first four months of winter, the person's not gonna be sitting around. We've got plenty of work for him. And so, I just, that's my appeal. I, I think this position is, I, I think it's critical to our operations, and I really wanna see it filled. Unfortunately, I can't, I can't explain it to you in a one-to-one thing. Like, if I say, you know, if we lost Walt, Walt does this, this, and this, or if we lost, you know, Mark Cunningham, he does this, this, and this, or some person who we all know. The maintainers are a large group, and they, but they're, again.
They're a mosaic. They just kind of all blend together and work in an integrated fashion.
And they, they do a lot of the same things, so they're, they're, you know, they're heavily involved. But, and the last thing I'll mention, if I can, is that we have an aging crew, I'll say, to be polite. So, we've got a lot of folks down there with seniority, and they've all got four or five weeks vacation as it comes along after twenty years or plus. And the problem is that in the summers, or the non-winters, is when they take their vacation because they're, they're mostly prohibited in the winter. Only four, four members that I've bargained, I mean, it can be off in the winter at all, not, not at one time, period. So, so they all bank their vacation, obviously, and the other eight months, they've gotta use it. So, any given day, if we have a crew of twenty, twenty-one, say, with the building maintainers tended in, you, you know, you might have a crew of thirteen or fourteen, and they'd be given day in the summer because you've got people off and taking their own leave now. So, that's where having the numbers really helps because you can slide it around and make it work for you. Thanks for listening. That's my.
Are you down two people with Kevin retiring, or is you just, there's just a one? Is it, you're sort of filling that Kevin Simmons position?
We're never gonna re-throw him.
Right, that's gone, I mean, from, from, first of all, but from a personal, so you're really just down this one position?
He was a working foreman.
Right, no, I got, I got that. I was just, but, you know, with him, if he had been working, would you still need one more person, or would that have covered that?
We, we probably could've made that work, although he was a different grade.
That's how I understand it. He would've been, he would've been another work, potentially.
Another set of hands, yeah.
Don't you have page ten to sort of counterbalance the hiring?
Now, yes, we can go into page ten if you wanna jump our into it.
I have a question on personnel, though. It still seems to me that we need more people in the winter than we do any other time of the year. And I know you're trying to make a case for things that they do in the summer. I assume part of that's correct. But is there any way we can, we could support, if we didn't hire this individual, is there people in WPCA or elsewhere that you could pull in and use? We shake his head in the back there, but I'm asking. Anybody that we could draw on for plowing as we need?
The WPCA has a, their process goes on twenty-four seven, so it's, it's hard to pull from them when we're plowing or anything like that because the work that they have happens every day. It doesn't, it doesn't sound like an assembly line.
They have plowing of their own.
Right, they, they've got their own, they're staffed for summer, winter, whatever, but they, they have to go check the pump stations every day. They have to clean screens and do all the, check the process and all the stuff that goes on. Gotta explain to people, I've done it, I can, but that's always been the understanding and what I've seen on the ground is that they, they have a full plate every, every day, no matter if it rains, snows, or the sun comes down.
If you get to page ten, it might, it might.
I still think there's an opportunity to potentially outsource plowing.
And we can go to page ten.
I will, but I still have some questions that I think I'm allowed to ask without having somebody force me to page ten.
Well, we think it'll answer some of the questions. That's the only reason why we were doing that.
So, I, I'll go through page ten pretty quickly, but this is just a comparison of hiring a contractor for a snow plowing to replace a full-time public works employee. There's three columns, and I won't burden you with all the numbers, but the first column is the annual cost of a full-time public works employee, which lines up with what you just saw in previous page. So, it's eighty-three thousand, three hundred dollars in round numbers.
It's annualized?
Yeah, that's for, yeah, that's for the whole year. That includes snow overtime, mandatory snow overtime. The middle column is, we took a public works employee in a truck which was, which was amortized over fifteen years. So, you've got the wages, which is his straight time during snow events. We actually went back into the records and pulled these numbers out. So, this, that's his straight time that he was on, that he was on the clock in his normal work shift. You've got his snow and ice overtime for a typical employee, and then, you've got his benefits, which we've costed him there for that portion of his time. And then, you've got under the, we put in the supplies, that's a truck, over fifteen years, a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollar, a hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred dollar truck, which is basically a truck and a plow, what we request most years. That's a truck, that's twelve hundred dollars for maintenance costs and thirteen hundred dollars for fueling. That's all funded in there. So, you get thirty-three thousand, two hundred dollars out of that. And then, if you had a contractor doing the work, this is a contractor at a hundred and ninety-five dollars an hour, which is the state bid number, doing the same amount of hours as the public works employee that we just costed out before. So, it's just an hour-for-hour comparison.
So, that's their truck?
Their truck and their, their employee.
Their truck, their employee, and we didn't get rid of the truck, is what you were not anticipating there?
Uh, right, we didn't.
We're still getting a truck.
Well, the fleet would just stay the same at this point, basically.
Right, 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 right.
So, so it's about fifty thousand dollars for a contractor on any given year. As you can imagine, this is an average, and some years, it's, it's always over from our analysis, but it's, some years, it's double or double and a half, and some years, it's closer to, you know, one point five or something like that as opposed to where it is here. So, these are the, the numbers. I think the, the big takeaway is that if you hire somebody, if you hire a contractor for fifty thousand dollars for another thirty-three thousand dollars, you get the employee for the other eight months of the year. Right now, if you hire the contractor for fifty thousand, you're getting him for four months a year. But for the other thirty-three thousand dollars, you're getting him in eight months at a bargain, I'm gonna call it, compared to, it's not a one-to-one. It's, I think, bargain might not be the right word.
For the low, low bargain price of thirty-three thousand.
So, what you're suggesting is that you're giving up something and not saving them, is what you're saying? Because you're gonna give it up in the, in the other months when, when you save. Well, actually, you're valuing more of their time over those eight months than it actually costs you in the winter because the winter's soft, it's shorter time.
Right, right.
So, George, I, I understand one of the drawbacks might be the last couple of bullets saying contractors less familiar and so on, whatever, but don't you think you also would be able to hire people who are contractors from within the town who would know the town so that you wouldn't have some of those liabilities? And also, would you think of contracting so that you are utilizing them in certain areas that wouldn't detract from, or having, you would have to redo the routes, I would assume, so that, for example, you could hire contractors that would just do cul-de-sacs? Or do specific areas where, you know, we know, like, we know we have problems doing cul-de-sacs, you know? And that way, you're keeping the trucks on the main roads to do those, and would redo it?
Right, we, you could do something like that, but it wouldn't save you the dump truck. You need the dump truck for the straight roads. Some of your pickup does the cul-de-sacs, so that doesn't save you as much. And we also, Michael points out to me, the contractors typically don't salt. So, they, they're mainly just plowing. They plow straight, and then, our in-house guys would have to go around and salt, salt depending before and after the storms.
And do we do that for every cell strike?
Pretty much, yeah, we pretty much salt.
I thought there were some that were, that we didn't pre-treat.
We, we don't necessarily have to pre-treat, but a lot of times, before the, just as the snow's coming down, you salt just to break that problem. It's not spraying the liquid necessarily, it's just the salt.
So, you're saying contractors don't have sanders on their vehicles?
They, some do.
Most of them that I know, when you run a truck, you get the plow with the sander or salt.
Yeah, a lot of my compatriots, they, they say they don't, they don't have salt because they, the sand, well, the news is that they, they just spray the salt. You know, our guys meter it out. It's, it's expensive. The salt is, is way more expensive than the man-hours to put it down. So, we meter it out. We've got computerized controls in those trucks that, you know, just dribble it out in places. And a lot of these guys, if you give them salt, they just broadcast it.
So, that's a different issue. So, they can do it, you prefer not to have them do it.
Right. That's been the caution from, from folks I've talked to. Yeah, they, you know, and it depends on what you get. A lot of the state bids, it's just a truck, no sander. I mean, the state are a good factor there.
George, how many, how many hours of plowing in a season? I don't need it right now.
Yeah.
But I, so, so basically, it's two hundred and fifty-four hours of plowing for this guy, this person, this contractor, for forty-nine thousand dollars.
Right.
And a hundred and ninety-seven. That person's plowing for two hundred. I'm just wondering, how far that, how many storms that would cover, or how, how that would work?
That's an actual average from the last five years. So, that's.
That's about two hundred and fifty-four hours per season for a truck.
Right, okay. And of course, with our guys, some, some of those hours are straight time and some of it overtime, so that's why we have to break it up.
Nearly twenty-eight hours.
Yeah?
A lot of hours. Nearly twenty-eight hours.
Yeah, most of these storms are, you know, twelve to eighteen hours, back into the pathway.
Question. So, when you, if that, the number here you have for thirty-three thousand, two thirty-six, is that, does that include, like, you know, if we have to go back out and salt, you know, for some of the stuff, you know, is that, is this including the, the time? I mean, I know it's for the employee in the truck. Does that include the salting? And then, ultimately, if you're talking about a contractor for forty-nine thousand, you're saying there would have to be time in addition to the forty-nine thousand for the contractor? Whether it has to be an employee following or doing something else in addition to the forty-nine thousand dollars? You're saying they don't salt, you don't want them to salt on top of forty-nine thousand? We have an extra couple thousand dollars per event or whatever of just time of someone salting the road?
I, I think, David, it would, it would kind of bear out the way it is because we already salt the entire town for that thirty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-six number. So, I, I don't think that would change too much. It's just that the contractor, the contractor would do his part, and then, we come in on top of the salts. It would be another hour for somebody to go out there and do that sort of thing.
George, if you didn't have to plow snow, how many dump trucks would you need?
Yeah, that's a good question. I've got, well, we've got fourteen frontline trucks now. Maybe you want ten or something like that. You know, we, we do use them, obviously, for pulling demolition debris out, you know, sidewalk, especially sidewalks, demolition logs and that sort of thing, so they do get used. But you probably, it's not a one-to-one. I don't think you need a truck for every, every guy like we have now.
Anything else, George?
I think if, if you're done with the decision, if you're done with the decision, move on to Happy Town. On page twelve.
Page.
Everybody loves paving, so we, we just put a copy of the latest paving list. And like Walt did earlier, I have to give a lot of credit to Don Nolte and Dan Bombero, who came up with this list. They've driven all over this town and given us a really good framework to work from. And then, myself, Walt, Mark Cunningham, Rich Pruitt, and those gentlemen have conspired to come up with this list together. But Dan and Don did the bulk of the work.
It's gonna be awards night.
I won't burden you with all the roads and everything, but it's, this'll be available in our office for anybody who wants to see it. It'll be online and everything else. I have a map if anybody wants to look at it in large scale, but I, again, I don't wanna cut up all your time.
Well, the other thing, too, is you'll have this for a few months before we make the final decision.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Mr. Rollins.
That's right.
Tim, can George just speak to the truck that we have to rebuild for eight thousand? So, I know there were some questions asked to me about the cost of that, and I'm. We just brushed over it quickly at the beginning, but that's important, and I just want him to explain the cost and why it's eight thousand.
Sure. Last year, well, as the fleet ages, we, we haven't bought a new dump truck in a couple of years, and that's, we've been getting by. That's, that's okay. We actually bought a small dump truck last year that the council funded. Yeah, and it's been great. It's, it's actually done a great job for us.
But this eighty isn't the WPCA report. This is something else?
No, no, but this is, this is a dump truck for public works, yeah.
So, the, the issue with our, our trucks is, years back, we bought, we bought trucks with a double frame, and I won't, I won't burden you. I should've thrown some pictures, but I won't burden you. But it's, it's basically a frame, two, two pieces of steel that are sinnesed together to make each rail of the frame. And the salt gets in there, and it corrodes, and there's no way to, no way to wash it out effectively. So, it, it just, it corrodes, it starts to split those two pieces apart, it makes the frames unstable. That's, that's the issue. We've, we've only, the good news is we've got, we're working our way out of those types of frames that fleet that's going away as we replace the trucks, but we still have three or four of them. This one is the worst of the bunch, and the idea was, it's a, it's a cheaper way to go. You don't have to go in for a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars or whatever the. You don't have to go in for $197,000 or whatever the regular truck cost. But it's, we, you basically, unfortunately, you have to disassemble the truck to get the frame out from under it. You literally have to strip it down to its bare components, have new frame rails made and then put it all back together. So you've got brand-new frame rails on a 12, 13, 14-year-old truck that goes on it. And we picked the ones that have good motors, good transmissions, good rear ends, transfer cases. What's that?
We do it in the temp shop?
In, last year, we did. Rich Kizer took it on just because he wanted to see what the costs were involved and he doing it in-house because he wanted to check the prices of the vendors and he's gotten quotes from them. And it, it cost him, with our in-house labor, mostly him, probably about $45,000 to do it in-house. So the outside number is around $80,000 if you send it out somewhere and he'll disassemble it. So he figured that was about right with markups and everything else that we do. We could try to do it in-house, but I, again, those mechanics are pretty tapped out with police vehicles and all the other stuff they do, so I'm reticent to commit to say that, yeah, we can do it. But I know they'd love to because it's that kind of challenge that they really did their teeth into. But, you know, if we get enough spare time over the summer and the funding is there.
So you haven't done this yet. You're looking to do it?
We'd like to do it. Yeah, we rebuilt one last year in-house for that $45,000, $50,000 number, but we'd like to, we'd like to rebuild another one because this one is getting to the point where it's not going to be able to stand in the road much longer than the six.
So how much longer does that give you in life in the vehicle?
Probably, you know, you, it's hard to say, but you'd get another five years reliably out of it probably, but over those years, as you know, you might lose the transmission at some point after rebuilding that, you might lose a rear end, you might lose the transfer case or something. Those are all components that can be replaced. It's not the end of the world, but you're, at some point, they become unreliable when they get to a certain age and you, you know, every storm, it's something different, I think, so.
So have you done that analysis so that you can show us? I think you can get five more years, but we're going to probably have to do a transmission or we may have to do a motor and what the cost differential is between abandoning the truck and buying a new one?
Right, we.
$45,000, it's one issue, but at $80,000, it becomes another issue.
Right, right. It's half the price, well, a little short of half the price of a new truck essentially if you rebuild it. I mean, the motors are tens of thousands of dollars, but Rich has all those checked over before we put them back together. So he has, he sends them out, has them checked out. They say, yeah, it's good, right? It's good right now, but I can't tell you that in two years, it's not going to need a bearing in the transmission or something like that. So we don't have enough experience rebuilding them, I guess, at the bottom line, to give you a good number for that, you know, the costs that are ahead of us. It might be nothing, you know, those things might run fine. The good news is a lot of that work we can do in-house, so we can rebuild the motor itself. We can get the motor out, we can ship it somewhere, get it redone and put it back in, which saves a lot of time and money from a contractor.
But I guess what I'm saying is if it's going to cost us 100 to get five years and it's going to cost us 185 to get 15 years.
Right.
It's a pretty easy analysis, isn't it?
I agree, I agree. Yeah, I mean, the newer truck, or the, you know, the newer truck is just more reliable. The downside is that with these newer emissions that have come in and everything, the newer level emissions, that's a big wild card, you know? We have trucks going back to the dealers a number of times because they're throwing these emission codes and there has to be, you know, a specialized repair that's going to, they can't do it in our shop. But much like modern cars or anything else, you know, these things are.
And that's coming with the newer trucks.
Yeah, right. So the older trucks don't have that issue so much. They have emissions, but it's not to the same level. So sometimes saving some of the older ones is worth it from a reliability standpoint.
How quickly could you get a truck rebuilt if we outsourced it?
Yeah, we take months, so probably, probably three or four months. That's why we can't wait till the capital budget because we'll already be in the next year.
And if you were to buy a truck, you'd end up waiting, what, 11 months?
Yeah, we, you know, if we bought a truck, typically, if we buy a truck in November, we get it in June, July, the next year, something like that.
So this way, you could have a truck in four months if it goes through the capital budget and you buy one, it'll be easier. So we're looking at about a 14 or 15 month time difference between having the truck.
And do you have spares if we decided to buy a new truck and not rebuild this truck? Do you have something?
Yeah, we, yeah, there's a couple spares down there that we use through the winter.
Use them for extracurriculars. When we don't have enough cars, we run those out and put lights on.
But we, yeah, we do have spares, but.
So you could, you could wait for a new truck if that was the optimal?
Right. Or if we knew we were just going to nurse this one through the year, through this coming winter, assuming, you know, Rich checks everything out over the summer, assuming he can get it through, he works a lot of magic down there. Assuming he gets it through the winter and we know it's just going to go to auction after that, you know, there's a lot of things you can do differently, but we just, if we're going to have to keep something, we just need to start thinking about that now because we're, we're always a winner away from receiving a truck.
I just think we need to make the best financial decisions. So, you know, at $80,000, that's a lot of money and I think you have to assume you're going to be doing some reasonable work to that truck in those five years that you're extending its life when the truck is already 15 years old.
We just have to remember that a capital budget.
Right, right. So it's just a, again, a decision point that I just want to bring into your attention that it's something that's.
So it was more attractive when we did it last year, when we did it for $45,000, bottom line.
Right, right. And if I could tell you we could do it in-house, you know, we would take that on, but I can't, I can't promise it.
But that makes, that does make it very different.
And if there was one, you know, the hypothetical case, if there was one that was eight years old that was rusting out for some reason, that makes all the sense in the world, so we do that, and we try to do that in-house probably just to save.
You can get 10 years on it.
Right, right. These trucks are all, you know, we're talking about 2003s, 2004s, that kind of stuff.
With eighty grand in the truck that old, that seems.
Yeah, you got a 15-year-old motor, you got a 15-year-old transmission, you got 15-year-old brakes and everything else.
We just had, we just had one more.
What?
We had the one more department, the water control department again. Scott Hallier, why don't you come, Scott? Scott is, he's been the assistant superintendent at the plant for, how long?
16 years.
Yeah. And he is now our acting superintendent. But what we were going to do, Walter put together on page 14, a pretty good summary of the five-year history of what's going on at the plant. We can obviously go into the detail, but because it's really been a maintenance budget with the exception of the additional costs of the debt service, you know, we didn't want to take up more of your time than we needed to, so I'll have him go through that summary and then we have Scott answer any questions he might have about some of the specific light items.
I just wondered, based on what Paul suggested a bit ago about a portion of some of the engineering services.
Yes.
That would be something we could incorporate into this budget change if we still chose, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be one of our decision changes.
Changes, yeah.
Decision changes. That's why I wrote that on here.
I made it up too.
Again, you know, Michael's asked me to kind of give a first high-level view and then we can borrow into whatever detail you want, but looking at page 14 and, you know, went back over five years and if you look at, you know, the top line, you know, the fiscal year 2014 budget, the proposed 2019 budget, you know, it looks like, you know, the budget went up by a lot, you know, 1.14 million dollars. But if you look at the first two items below that, the increase in money that's transferred to cover administrative costs to the town and the increased amount of money that's sent for debt service, that is actually, exceeds that amount. So if we weren't making those changes, and certainly they're required, I mean, we've got a big capital expenditure down there, so you're trying to help with that, but over a five-year period, you know, materials have gone down by almost $19,000, utilities by $60,000, contractual services by almost $78,000. So actually, you know, those, all of those items have gone down and it's really the increase in debt service and, you know, administrative costs. Salaries, over a five-year period, salaries have gone up $88,000, benefits $18,000. So in reality, over a five-year period, those have increased on average about 2.1% a year. And as far as the increase in, you know, what residents are charged, that average increases about 2.5%. So I think, you know, that's number one. And then going into this year's, between this year's budget and last year's budget, again, you know, if you just look at the large number, you go, wow, geez, the appropriation last year was, you know, $4,021,000, this is on page 138, and now we're asking for $4,535,000. Well, it sounds like a big increase, but all of that, actually, more than, more than that is from the increase in debt service. Debt service transfer increased by $523,000.
Yeah, if you look at page 131, it might be easier because you see the increase, the increase there is 513, 585, and the debt service increase is 523. So the budget would be about $9,400 less if not for that debt service increase. But this has also been the workhorse for us because that's where the money's been to support that debt service increase. One, because they had such a large increase in their surplus. Two, the plan that Walter developed with the, with the commercial sewer use change last year, we redistributed a larger portion of the proportion here on the commercial and picked up another $324,000 in revenue annually, which is also supporting this debt service. And then money from the prison settlement also went into WPCB. So they are the workhorse for the debt service payment.
So, I mean, again, you know, looking over a five-year period and an annual period, we've actually flatlined if there wasn't for debt service. And, you know, that, we can't do anything about. I mean, the plant hadn't been, you know, hadn't been upgraded in 25 years, you know, so had been new requirement of phosphorus removal, so that had to be done. That wasn't kind of optional or it wasn't done because, you know, the plant wasn't paying. Actually, we got beyond our 20-year life expectancy, whatever, so I think we, you know, I think we've done very well there. And we'll say that, you know, even with that commercial increase, which was significant because it wasn't phased in, but, you know, I was the point person for phone calls on that and I only received two phone calls.
We did a good public relations marketing effort on that, I think. You and Arnett, we headed that up and when back to the council, we discussed it, we publicized it. There were no surprises. I mean, the commercial sector knew it was coming, but what surprised us was their acceptance of it and I think it goes back to the fact that a good case was made to support it early on and it was, it was hard to dispute the equity of it.
What's the overtime $45,000? Is that necessary? Yeah, part of it is the. As far as weekend and.
We generally have one person come in for two, two and a half hours on a Saturday and Sunday for weekends. There's certain readings and measurements that we have to take on a daily basis while our state regulations. But the majority of that overtime is emergency overtime. It's calling work, either snow or we have equipment breakdowns, we have to go out and clean lines in the streets, it's a various number of things. I really don't have a lot of control over that number.
If you have, if you have that broken down, just where it was spent last year?
No.
We could figure it out. We could figure it out. Also, when you go down into a pump station, you have to go down to two people.
We have to have two people. So it's not like, right, if they're in an emergency call or something like that, if we're out, have to go out and clean the sewer line or something, that's usually the minimum of three people coming in because you need traffic control. If we have to go to a pump station, they've got to have two people go. So if it's just around the plant, for some of the things, only one person can respond, but for the majority of the time, two people have to come in.
And that's for the safety.
Not from a safety standpoint, yes. There's certain things you can't do by yourself just because of OSHA and everything else.
And that's something actually Dennis changed a while back. There used to be, on a Saturday, send a call. There used to be two people. Now it's one person and only if they have that, go into a hazardous situation, is a second person called in. But, you know, if they're just making their rounds and everything checks out.
Is that, is that second person paid a stipend to be on call?
Yes, they all are paid. They're, it's rotated among the crew, but there's two guys on call per week, which includes the weekend. One lead guy who would be your first caller and then he has his backup guy who should call in if he needs him.
But if, but the person's being paid, he doesn't have to call in, is that correct?
Correct. There is a stipend.
And what is that?
It's part of the contract. It's $25 a day and $30 on Sunday over leave.
Whether that person comes in or not.
Correct. And that's part of the contract.
Well, we can, we can sit down and work to allocate this so that you could see how the overtime is broken out.
Some questions, that's all.
Yes, we could do that.
So how's life without us?
A little difficult.
Scott's got big shoes.
We've worked close together for a long time and it's just picking up the slack and getting used to what he used to handle things. But things are going smoothly. And he's there, I talk to him through email and I'll call him a couple times if I have a question I can call him, so.
But you're still down.
Yes.
You're down Yuma in a way.
Yes.
Back.
Yeah, we've, I've got people temporarily moving around and they've discussed on a good job, keeping, keeping all the balls in the air, as they say, and he's fully licensed them, so he's, the plant's a good hand. Only one item under 53 utilities, actually see that it's about a, well, it's actually $22,000 less than what we have to make to spend this year. And that's going to be a direct result of the solar at the landfill. We have what's called virtual net metering. We can put that to different accounts and so a portion of those accounts are WPCA accounts because, you know, the pumps, a couple of large pump stations and the treatment plant sucks up a lot of power. The rest of it gets to town building. Wasn't some of it, just the plant on its own, short of the solar, that's supposed to be operating more efficiently as well? Well, yeah, actually, you know, and I was looking back at that, we, the actual reduction originally was, you know, estimated at $120,000 for the existing equipment. However, when you took into account, we had to add a whole new treatment plane, train in the phosphorus, which, you know, are pressure filters. And also, we went to UV, which is basically, you know, some high-intensity light bulbs that have been wrapped for five months a year. They took about $60,000 of that back, but it still was $60,000 less than it had been. Yeah, that was, and that was in the five-year, when you, when you look at the utilities, actually, like you said, it's $61,650 less now than it was five years ago.
Walter, are those panels online? I thought I read that they're not going to be on tomorrow.
Yeah, actually, it should be on tomorrow. They're about a month late in fairness to the contractor, it really had nothing to do with them. There's a thing called a witness test where every source comes out and verifies everything is up to snuff so that when they plug back into their network, you don't blow it up or something. Three weeks in a row, we had a snowstorm on the day every source was supposed to come out and do the witness test. So they finally made it out last week, they approved it, they actually sent the letter today saying it's okay to interconnect. And tomorrow, they literally come and install their meter. And it probably is going to take two more days after that before Tesla actually has their equipment in to, to charge us. So actually, for two days, we get all the power free. So hope for a couple sunny days.
Yeah, exactly. That's it.
Michael, quick question on 5102, the salaries. I see you took a $10,000 credit and adjustment. What was that for?
Dennis was making $118,000 and we didn't feel that we needed to post a job at that higher level, so hopefully we can fill it at 108 or less.
Your job is posted.
Yes. Actually, we've gotten applications and George and. Actually, we've gotten applications, and George and Walter, I guess, will be conducting interviews soon.
What do you mean, I don't know, I know you said it's a...
Yeah, I'll type, let me just find it, it was Thursday. It's an E3. If you look at the yellow, that yellow handout, E3, is Dennis, was that a 40-hour week? Yes. Oh, okay. The, it's a, the minimum is 80, the minimum is $80,689, the maximum is $122,405, and mid is $101,547. It's an E3.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, do you have to stretch to stay for five minutes to go into executive session and go over the...
Absolutely. Good time.